Okay, we're ready to go whenever you are, sir.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to work. We start with a roll call.
Council President McGurven. Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Yeah.
Councilmember Albertson.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yeah.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor. Yes.
Move we excuse and absent council member.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Van, that the absent council member be excused. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. So tonight, we're going to start off with.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add legislation.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Van, that the agenda be amended to add legislation.
Yes. Uh, ordinance six zero six one moratorium for BSS.
Yes, sir, I got it.
Got it? Okay.
Are we gonna vote?
Do we have to vote on that?
Oh, yes, sir. Sorry.
Okay, and when it was six zero six one.
Six zero six one.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the agenda be modified to include Agenda six zero six one. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Right, we're gonna start tonight's meeting with a proclamation, and the first one up is Kalani Bolton Day.
Okay, proclamation, whereas according to the American Lung Association, nearly thirty-seven million Americans live with a chronic lung disease like asthma and COPD, including emphysema and chronic bronchitis. And whereas Kalani Bolton, who suffered from asthma, tragically lost her life too soon and had many interests and aspirations. And whereas Kalani enjoyed gymnastics, track and field, ballet and tap, spending time with her family, including fishing with her dad, playing basketball with her nephew, styling hair with her cousins, and the usual activities kids love, shopping, dancing, and music. And whereas Kalani and her family had plans for her future, such as getting a driver's license, attending high school and college, and becoming a pediatrician. And whereas Kalani serves as an inspiration to us all, proving that you can have an incredible impact and influence on your family, friends, and community. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two to be Kalani Bolton Day in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in the special observance. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this eighteenth day of April, two thousand twenty-two. Signed, Mayor Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Councilmember Prince, I move the proclamation to be adopted as read.
Second. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Van, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries, and tonight to accept the proclamation is Kalani's mom, Christina Williams. Hello, Christina.
Yes. Christina, are you there? I'm trying to promote you to a panelist and. Christina.
Hello, Christina, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, would you like to say a few words?
Uh, my sister would.
Okay. Oh, oh, we have to promote, uh, Francis. Her hand is raised.
Francis, you should be able to join as a panelist.
Hello, Francis, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
I sure can.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, thank. Thank you. Um, so I just want to say on behalf of my sister, thank you to the City of Renton for acknowledging um, Kalani and what happened to her in the City of Renton and, and um, proclaiming April twenty-first Kalani Day. On the back behalf of our family, we thank you and we thank the council.
Well, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Okay. Have a good rest of your night, and I hope to talk to you soon.
Perfect, thank you, you as well.
All right, the next proclamation is Arbor Day, Earth Day.
Hey, proclamation, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees called Arbor Day, which is now observed through throughout the nation and the world. And whereas the City of Renton has been recognized as a Tree City USA since two thousand eight by the Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas trees reduce soil erosion, produce life-giving oxygen, increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business districts, improve wildlife and fish habitats, and contribute many other benefits. And whereas in nineteen seventy, Senator Gaylord Nelson introduced legislation designating a day in April as a national day to celebrate the earth and called it Earth Day. And whereas volunteers from neighborhood schools, businesses, and service clubs will have the opportunity to help the City of Renton celebrate Arbor Day and Earth Day this year at a city-sponsored event in Maplewood Park on April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. And city staff will help mark the occasion by assisting with tree planting to help restore and beautify the urban forest. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two to be Arbor Day, Earth Day in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to observe the occasion and join in our special and join in or participate in their own way and consider planting trees where they live. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this eighteenth day of April, two thousand twenty-two. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the proclamation to be adopted as read.
Second. Second.
Yeah, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Van, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries, and tonight to accept the proclamation is Urban Forestry and Natural Resource Manager Ian Gray. Good to see you, Ian.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you so much for presenting the proclamation. Well received on this end, thank you very much. Um, I have to say that it's going to be exciting to finally be able to plant some trees with residents of Renton for the first time in a couple of years and mark Arbor Day. Um, and I don't know if you're aware, but this is the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of Arbor Day. And uh, it's also the fiftieth anniversary of the Arbor Day Foundation. And the Arbor Day Foundation, of course, is the entity that uh, renews our Tree City USA uh, status. Um, fourteen years going strong for the City of Renton, so yeah, it's gonna be a good day. Uh, of course, it's gonna be wet and rainy all week, fingers crossed that it's not too wet on the day. But uh, we're definitely looking forward to it. Should be a good event.
All right, thank you very much. Good to see you again.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and uh, last but not least is the proclamation where we stand in solidarity with Ukraine.
Hey, proclamation, whereas the sovereign nation of Ukraine has been invaded by Russian military forces. And whereas the invasion of Ukraine and attacks against its people have been broadly condemned by numerous countries, including the United States. And whereas Renton and the surrounding region is home to many Ukrainian residents, adding to the diversity, vitality, and commerce of our city. And whereas our Ukrainian community members are experiencing pain, hardship, and grief due to the atrocities occurring in you, in Ukraine. And whereas the City of Renton supports our local Ukrainian community leaders in their efforts to find ways to support those affected by this war and tragic moment in history. Whereas the Ukrainian community will be hosting a benefit concert, date to be determined, to celebrate the proud and vibrant Ukrainian culture through music and community. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim that the City of Renton stands in solidarity with our Ukrainian neighbors, as well as the people of Ukraine, as they bravely defend their coun- country, their freedom, and their lives, and we extend our deepest sympathies for those lives that have been lost. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this eighteenth day of April, two thousand twenty-two. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the proclamation.
Second.
Okay, it's been, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, again by Councilmember Van, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, and tonight joining us, we have Executive Director of the UK, Ukraine Community Center, and also a member of the mayor's inclusion task force, Olek Pinda. Olek.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. You hear me, right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, saying, thank you, city councilman, woman, uh, for the proclamation. This is actually a big deal for us because um, having this kind of invasion uh, that's equal to the Second World War where a lot of casualties, a lot of damages been done, where women been raped, children been killed, and what caused more than four million people to leave Ukraine and more than eight million displaced within the Ukraine. So it shows us big deal and support from the local city of Renton where there is a large Ukrainian communities, Ukrainian businesses, so. And all we, all Ukrainian, American Ukrainian uh, people, residents of Renton, appreciate for all the support and all the help that the city was pro- is, was and is, and I believe will be providing to the greater Ukrainian community. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight, and like you said, we do have an extremely large Ukrainian community, and we definitely support them. So, thank you for joining us tonight. Yes, Councilmember Van.
Yeah, and, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this proclamation, and thank you, Alay, for being here. Um, as a former refugee from Vietnam, uh, very much understand the situation as refugees settling in the United States. And anything that we can do within the Renton jurisdiction in King County and the state of Washington, please reach out and let us know. Um, and, and take care. Thank you so much, Alay.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much, and matter in fact, right now, we have a new influx of refugees from Ukraine through the Mexican border, and we are working hard, but there are many issues that have to be addressed, the issue of housing, of uh, medical, of mental health. And I know that I always could count on the City of Renton. Thank you.
All right, thank you for joining us tonight. All right, next on our agenda is the administration, administrative report.
Yes, all right. Good evening, everyone. Olek, good to see you. All right, Clean the World's Mobile Shower Unit will be available in Renton every Monday in April from eight AM to twelve PM at three hundred Rainier Avenue North. For more information on this service and others provided by the foundation, please visit cleantheworldfoundation.org. The emergency feed, the emergency feeding program SOS will be hosting a pop-up lunch event at the Sunset Neighborhood Park, two six eight zero Sunset Lane Northeast, from twelve-thirty to two PM on Tuesday, April nineteenth. Unsheltered in those residents with food insecurities will receive free, ready-to-eat food and drinks from Amazon Fresh. Personal hygiene kits, cleaning supplies, and socks will also be made available. Future pop-up lunch events are scheduled for the first and third Tuesdays of the month. Locations will be announced monthly. Park improvements, construction for Kowana's Park, which is over sixty years old, will begin this month. The park will be closed during the construction. Improvements will include an ADA accessible entrance off of Union Avenue, ballfield upgrades with synthetic and synthetic turf and field and covered dugouts, a new restroom, a new shelter with picnic tables, a new playground with play structures for ages two to five and six to twelve, and much more. Visit rentonwa.gov forward slash current projects to learn more about this bond-funded park renovation. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov forward slash traffic. All projects are weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll open the remote audience comment period. There remains a strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agenda. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. It will be called upon by a city staff member. The staff member, uh, will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker. Uh, you've been unmuted. This is the speaker's queue, that's their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, and the topic you're addressing. Speaker should be able to see a timer on the screen. Please finish up your comments when you see the time is close to expire. And I believe we have three people signed up tonight to speak.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have three. The first person is Ernesto Podaca. Ernesto, go ahead.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
All right, uh, my name is Ernesto Podaca, and I live in the city of Renton. More specifically, I live in Maplewood Glen Community. Uh, this, I'm going to speak tonight on the Buffalo Head Energy Storage Project. I spoke last week, if you're familiar, because you've become familiar with my name. This. I, I, I'm against this project in terms of, one, its location being next, next to me, so I have a little bit of skin in this game. It, I, I, I feel the location is inappropriate. When I look at the pre-planning, uh, the pre-planning packet, it only, it doesn't really show a lot of information on the site plan. You kind of infer that there's only one point of ingress and egress onto the site, which is concerning from a, from a fire safety standpoint, so if that, if that uh, if that access is blocked for some reason during a fire, the fire department will have really no means of fighting the fire in that particular, on that site, which is concerning, given that it's batteries, and we all know that, you know, one of the, one of the cautions about batteries is you don't throw them in the fire type of, type of thing, we read the cautions on, on a packet of of ion lithium batteries. Yeah, so, and I don't see a way of making that site conducive to multiple points of entry. So that, that's, that's, that's very concerning in, in an event of, of a fire. The other issue that I have is, once again, is with the zoning of, of this. So we know, we all know that it's zoned for, it's zoned RC, which is, which is resource conservation. And the idea that you're gonna put something that is that is uh, that, that is for the storage of energy onto the site, which, for the City of Renton, there, there is no appro- you, you, you don't typically put something like that in, in any sort of residential zoning. You know, if you look at your, your land, land use charges, typically in industrial or some sort of commercial setting. Not, not in a RC zoning type, type of scenario. So, so I, I do have a, a, a strong objection to the zoning. I don't object to the, to the, to the energy storage facility in and of itself. I just don't, I just don't agree with the location, and I do not agree with the, the fact that they're going into more of a residential or, or even a resource conservation type zone, which I would, I would presume that they would be uh, getting a special use permit for that. And so I, I would urge uh, the planning department, as well as city council and you, Mr. Mayor, to say no to this particular project, once again. Uh, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
You're muted.
Sorry about that. The next person that we have is Nancy Quinn. Nancy, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This is Nancy Quinn. I live in the City of Renton. I also live in the Maplewood, Maplewood neighborhood. And I just wanted to thank everyone for their incredible response to our concern about a proposed battery, battery energy storage facility behind our homes, including several of you. It is moments like these that helps one realize how strong and articulate our neighbors are, and I can't thank everyone enough for rallying behind this cause. We know what we want. Personally, I'm exclusively focused on what we want, not on what we don't want. We want to preserve our green belt, period. I trust that the City of Renton, its mayor and city council will work with us to preserve our resource conservation land in this precious parcel of land. We want to protect, protect, excuse me, we want to protect the wildlife that lives there. We want to protect our lifestyle in this wonderful nineteen forty's neighborhood where we live. We are a modest people of modest means, and this has already bonded us together with a common goal. I'm so proud to know all of you, and I look forward to watching our green belt triumph. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're muted again, Judith.
Sorry, I'm having technical difficulties here. Uh, the last person we have signed up is Selena Irving. However, I don't see Selena in our attendee list. And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to make sure the person that isn't that same?
Councilmember Rivera.
Excuse, um, do you want to make sure the person, Brooks King, isn't that person who signed up the public comment? Because I know we've had issues with people using the incorrect username or Zoom account by the name they sign up with. Is there a way that we can double check that?
I believe that's what she's doing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I believe that's what she was doing earlier. Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. There's seven items, um, with council elect, willing for separate consideration.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
See none, I move we adopt the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Van, that the consent agenda be adopted as read. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. We are on the unfinished business. Councilmember Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, unfinished business, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Van.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee has one committee report.
Hey, Transportation Aviation Committee Committee Report is regarding an update to Section ten eight one of uh, One Way Streets of the Rent Municipal Code. Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the ordinance updating Rent Municipal Code, Section ten eight one, codifying the conversion of certain streets or segments of streets from one-way to two-way between South Grady Way and North First Street, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Van.
Um, I move that the council confer with the Transportation Committee Committee Report.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Van, second by Councilmember Prince, that the council confer with the Transportation Committee Report. A discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Councilmember Albertson.
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next up is legislation. We have one resolution and one ordinance for first reading.
Hey, the resolution is regarding uh, ratification of an emergency declaration. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, declaring an emergency for purposes of repairing a signal pole and foundation and a signal cabinet and foundation at Renton Avenue, uh, EXT and Taylor Avenue Northwest.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Van.
I move the adoption of the resolution as read.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Van, second by Councilmember Prince, that the resolution be adopted as read. A discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries.
All right, the next uh, is the ordinance for first reading only. This is regarding the uh, street uh, conversions, codifying the street conversions. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section ten dash eight dash one of the Rent Municipal Code, codifying the conversion of certain streets or segments of streets from one-way to two-way, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Van.
I move the ordinance to be placed in second reading and second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Van, second by Councilmember Prince, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. A discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have the, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, we added ordinance six zero six one.
Right.
So I'd like to read that. So, uh, an ordinance uh, of the City of Renton, Washington, declaring a moratorium on land use, building permit, and business license applications for battery energy storage systems, setting forth findings of fact in support of said moratorium, providing for severability, declaring an emergency, and establishing an immediate effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
Move the ordinance to be placed on second and final reading tonight.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Albertson, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at tonight's meeting. A discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Great, I will read it again. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, declaring a moratorium on land use, building permit, and business license applications for battery energy storage systems, setting forth findings of fact in support of said moratorium, providing for severability, declaring an emergency, and establishing an immediate effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
I move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Vaughn, that the ordinance be adopted as read. The second final reading, discussion. It takes roll call.
Hey, Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
Councilmember Albertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, motion carries. Yeah. What is the wish of?
Yeah.
Oh, geez. I jumped ahead. Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, on Monday, April twenty-fifth, uh, two thousand twenty-two, at five PM, uh, the planning committee will meet by video conference. We have two items on the agenda. Retail pet sales update and emergency issues from CBD. And for Council President McGurven, I've been announced that at six PM, uh, the committee whole will meet also by video conference. If one item on the agenda, it's affordable housing update. At seven PM, the council meeting will occur, and that will also be.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Prince.
No, no new business, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Van.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Albertson.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two items of new business. The first is that on Monday, April twenty-fifth, at three forty-five PM, the Finance Committee will be meeting via video conference. We have six items on the agenda. The first is the Coolon North Waterwalk Improvement Contract Amendment. Second is Health and Safety Coordinator Position Step D Hire. Third is the two thousand twenty-two Carry Forward First Quarter Budget Adjustment Ordinance and two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two Fee Schedule Resolution. Fourth, we have the Washington State Department of Transportation for the Spring Creek, Spring Brook Creek Wetland and Habitat Mitigation Bank Agreement Amendment. Fifth is Community and Economic Development Reorganization Proposal, and sixth is vouchers. And for my other item, I would just like to let the public and the council know that I had the honor of joining the Rent Sikh Community yesterday to celebrate a vikashi, which is the birthdate of the founding of Sikhism. It was a wonderful experience that I will not soon forget. They requested I share that all are welcome to join. They requested I share that all are welcome to join them on any Sunday for prayer, music, and food. They only ask that participants are respectful, that both men and women cover their heads, and enter the temple barefoot. I personally was just delighted to be there, and it was very enlightening. Please feel free to reach out to me directly if you have any questions or interest in my wonderful experience with them. Thank you.
Thank you. What is the wish of the council now?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Albertson, that we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. All right, good night, all, adjourn.
Good night.